Commission meeting. So a call the zoning commission meeting to order, to order and Steve, can you do a roll call or Brian?
Sure, I can do that. Mr. Rowena?
Yeah.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Lingalis?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
Mr. Schulman?
Here.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
And Ms. Wells?
Here.
Good.
All right. Well, the first matter on our agenda is a public hearing. It's a twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four S U B. A Genario Romaldi, one oh seven Wolf Pit Avenue. It's a subdivision application to create a total of two buildings. There's a public hearing and a we will make a report in one condition. We're here representing Genario Romaldi.
Good evening. My name is Genaro Romaldi. I am the owner of one of Wolf Pit Avenue. And I've lived in the city of Newark for ninety-two years. I was born right now resident. And I worked for the engineering department for thirty-one years, city of Newark.
Mr. Romaldi.
This is fully, I cannot hear too good because.
He said, Steve, he said I'm a Zoom.
Yeah, not much we're going to be able to do about that at this point.
Can't move?
No, he can't.
Okay, sorry. Go, continue. I'm sorry to interrupt.
There he is. Oh, pick up, got him.
As I say, I worked for the city of Newark for thirty-one years in engineering. Several years in Parks and Rec. And I'm trying to subdivide this so I can sell the old homestead where I was born.
So what you're seeing is the survey with the proposed subdivision line. Brian, can you point the proposed lot split out so everybody can see? So the existing property fronts on Starlight and Wolf Pit. It's pretty straightforward an application as you will see. The, the idea is to split the lot into two lots with the parcel on the right being the existing site where the existing house as well as associated accessory structures will remain in place. And at some point in time, there, there might be another dwelling built on the new lot. It would be completely within the setbacks, which are the dash lines shown within the lot. Just to, for purposes of the public and staff and the commission, there was a recommendation in there to have a landscape plan submitted prior to the obtaining a zoning permit for the new construction. Right now, the, the area along Starlight Drive is pretty overgrown. The subdivision regulations give you the ability to require street trees at specific intervals along that frontage. Uh, there is a sidewalk, I should point out, along Starlight and Wolf Pit, so that is already in place. We could chat with T and P about that and they were satisfied with the conditions as they exist today. Again, prior to obtaining the zoning permit, they'll also need to get approved from D P W on the exact location of the driveway to make sure the lines of sight are appropriate and that there's no visibility issues for any vehicles that might be entering or exiting the site. But again, it's, it's pretty straightforward application.
Right, but that would all be done before they can build the.
Yeah, the, the fine details will come at that.
Yes. Okay.
Steve, if, if uh, they do want to put up a house on the, the property to the left, as we're seeing, uh, is that just an over the counter? It doesn't have to come back to us?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any further questions? Any questions of Mr. Romaldi? No, there are no questions. Well, then we will go to the public hearing portion of the application. In our public hearings, anyone who wants to speak will have the opportunity to speak, but you have the opportunity to speak only once. So say everything that you have in mind and cover all your points in your one opportunity to speak. Uh, nobody, there is no time limit, but in efforts to sort of efficiency, we would appreciate it if people catch the point and, and not hold up the commission with an amount of time that isn't absolutely necessary. So is there anybody here present, person who would like to speak? I don't see anybody. Can we see if there's somebody online?
Brian, is there anybody in the?
If, if anyone online would like to speak regarding this application, you can use the raise your hand tool. You click that once. It's at the bottom of your screen. Doesn't appear so, Ms. Wells.
Okay, if there's nobody at the public hearing who wishes to speak, we will close the public hearing and we'll move on to action. Is there any discussion, any further questions? Do you have anything else?
My second.
On me?
Richard moved to approve. And I second.
Okay, good.
Brian, could you pull the resolution up?
Yes.
So no way, because you can just go. Okay. Okay, is there any discussion about the, uh, the resolution? Okay, then we can move to a vote. All those.
Do you want to do a roll?
Yes, please.
Sure. Uh, I'll start with Mr. Rowena.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lingalis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, well, your matter passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and dedication and all.
Okay, then we will move on to the preliminary review. Reviews and review and action on applications. The first matter is twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two, eight dash twenty-four referral, city of Noah, twenty fifth Monroe, Monroe Street and one state lease agreement of plus or minus one thousand three hundred square feet of commercial space to cap those please. Uh, is anyone here representing the city of this planet?
I think Jim Travers is.
Yeah.
It's, this is Jim Travers, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Uh, so the item presented in front of you is, uh, uh, your approval of the lease agreement, uh, for Adrian Hurtado. Uh, Ta- tacos, please, you'd be probably more familiar with him as the taco guy as he is the owner of a taco truck in town and a, and a brick and mortar building on, on Wall Street. Uh, he is looking to, um, uh, lease the space currently, uh, previously occupied uh, by Lobster Craft. Uh, Lobster Craft, uh, remove, uh, uh, moved, uh, they're no longer at the station. Uh, we've been looking for a tenant. Uh, I think, um, Adrian has a really great story. Um, he's Norwalk resident, um, came here at the age of fifteen, uh, worked hard. Uh, it is creating a, quite a name for himself in the, in the taco business. Uh, so the, uh, lease in front of you is, is looking, uh, for, it's a a five-year lease with two options to renew each for five years. He's going to do the outfitting of the space, uh, completely on him. Uh, this has been previously approved by the parking authority, uh, but just for currently, uh, with state regulations requires planning a zoning approval as well.
Does anybody have any, do ones have any questions? Mr. Travers?
Jim, um, uh, how, how did the city go about advertising the availability of the space?
Um, so, um, shortly after I arrived, we, um, we moved the leasing agreement into a leasing agent. So we have a property manager who actually does, uh, you know, so, um, I think, you know, we, the, the city had done, I think their, their best attempt to do it, but the, we don't have the resources that necessarily available that property managers do. So the property manager then is the, is the go-between between the city and, and, and the leasing agent, uh, there, but he does all the work. So anytime that we have an opening, he goes, he, he does all the work. He does the post, it was been posted on the building. Um, then he posts it up. We, we had a number of applications come through. This was the, the best one for the spot.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Jim, do we have a resolution for this?
I don't think so. I think, oh, Brian's heard of me. Yes. I'll move approval of the resolution.
One second. Okay. I'll lose in favor. Is anybody have any comment? Those are favorite. Should we do a roll call on this, Steve?
I don't think you have to. The raising hands is probably sufficient.
Okay, so everybody raise your hand if you're a favorite. Anybody opposed? Any extensions? Okay, it is unanimous. It's been approved.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure he'll be pleased. Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
Yeah, you do. Thanks.
Bye.
I don't know. You want to announce the next agenda item?
Well, anyway, we'll move on to the next one. I just only see the people who are here on the screen. I don't have the full zoom. I'm by, maybe various is going to fix it. Uh, voila. Just keep fiddling with them. You can't break it. Yeah. Voila. Okay, so we'll move on to the, that's twenty twenty-five dash fourteen cam. Ben, Benjamin Scherger Turner, five outer road. Uh, coastal site plan review to demolish an existing house, an in-ground pool and construct a new flood compliant, single-family detached dwelling. Uh, is anyone here representing the applicant?
Yes, I am. Yeah, I. We ready to get to the presentation.
Good, good. Okay, thank you. Proceed.
Is Mr. Turner ready to make this?
Are you ready? Yes, he should be. Are you ready to make your presentation to us?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, I'm Ben Turner. I'm the owner and the architect for the project. We would like to demolish a non-conforming single-family residence and rebuild it as a smaller conforming, single-family residence and also remove a swimming pool and, uh, uh, also a new septic system and drainage system. That's about it.
Do you have the ability to bring up the planner? If not, I think you probably could.
I can bring up the site plan for Mr. Turner.
Mr. Turner, could you walk the, just walk the commission through the, what's proposed?
Sure. Uh, proposed three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath residence. Uh, again, uh, about half the size of the existing dwelling. Uh, new, uh, location for the driveway, no garage, no carport. A, uh, rear deck and a front deck. Uh, screen porches on either side. Uh, no air conditioning, like we live next door and we've never used air conditioning. So it's, uh, again, a very low energy, uh, proposal, small, uh, renewable materials and, uh, what else? Uh, trying to leave all the existing native, uh, plantings. Uh, there's some red oaks. We're going to remove all the non-native species and replant with native, uh, native vegetation. Uh, next door, I don't know if anybody's been down to that part of Village Creek, but we've planted, uh, twenty-six oak trees on lot twelve. That's the house that we built fifteen years ago. And we're looking to do the same thing next door where my wife and I are both architects in New York and Connecticut. And we, uh, we're interested in moving the lot line back to the original location from nineteen fifty and, uh, making sure that nobody builds a might, uh, modern white farmhouse next door like Witch Lane. So, uh, that's, uh, that's pretty much it. And, uh, again, uh, we built our house uh, over ten years ago and the zoning code was four pages. Now it's close to four hundred. So it's a interesting experience and, uh, I think it's great. I think it's great to have the, uh, the new, the new zoning code. Uh, I think that Village Creek is a little bit of a outlier because it's a, uh, as you know, it's on the National Historic Register. It's a collection of mid-twentieth century modern homes. So they don't really fit into the cookie cutter, new urbanism, uh, pattern of the zoning code. And I'm glad to see that Norwalk has accommodated, you know, something that's not exactly in that, uh, new urbanism, uh, pattern, if you will.
Do you have an artist's rendering of what the proposed house will look like?
Yeah, good.
There's, I submitted elevations. We don't have a rendering. To, uh, do you all have the, the elevations?
Yeah, I'll pull those up, Mr. Turner.
Thanks. That's a section through the, uh, the dwelling. That's a section the other way. That's a elevation looking from outer road. That's elevation looking south, not too exciting, but pretty minimal. That's looking west. And the next one is looking to the north. So it's a very, again, it's, uh, less than twenty-three hundred square feet. Very simple, kind of like the house we built next door. Screen porches are a big part of it. They're almost, uh, a third of the square footage. Uh, we believe in being outdoors whenever possible. Again, operable windows everywhere. And minimal disruption to the site. Again, everything's open underneath. Um, no garage, no enclosed entry. Yeah, we, we tried to keep it simple. It's the anti-McMansion, if you will.
Yeah, that's the anti-McMansion. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a curiosity question, nothing to do with my vote. Is there still a architectural review committee in Village Creek?
There is, and they approved it, uh, with flying colors. They're very excited to have, uh, the, the house next door, uh, because our house has been received extremely well. We probably added ten percent to everybody's property values.
Thank you.
And were the, all the neighbors notified?
They were, of course.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions? Is there a motion to, uh, approve? Okay, Darius moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, Nick.
Oh, Nick, go ahead, Nick. Okay, Nick seconds. Uh, do we have a resolution? Okay, does anybody have any comments on the resolution? We'll proceed to take a vote. Can we do a roll call?
Alan, can I vote?
Yes, yes, you may proceed.
Yes, probably seated the entire evening. I'm soon.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lingalis?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes. Oh, yes, good luck. Looks like it'll be a lovely house. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Steve, for your patience with the campaign customer.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. It's twenty dash, twenty twenty-three dash eleven S P slash M B. Thomas J. Telesco, one fifty-one Main Street. Uh, this is a one-year extension of time request for an approved special permit for motor vehicle repair use. Is somebody here representing this, uh, Mr. Telesco? Is there anybody here on this application? Is there anybody in the Zoom?
Don't see anybody there.
I don't know how to get, yeah. You want to participate? I mean, it's twenty pieces.
I would say for now, maybe Madam Chairman, just moving on, circling back to that one at the end.
Okay. And if they're not here, we can reschedule them?
Yeah, and then, you know, maybe, Brian, if you have a minute to kind of take a peek and see how comfortable you are just walking them through the proposal.
Here.
Okay, we will move on to, uh, the next one. It's twenty twenty-five dash twenty-eight cam, ninety-four East Avenue LLC. Um, this is a coastal site plan review for a change of use for, from a, uh, plus or minus five thousand square foot office to six dwelling units for a total of eleven dwelling units within an existing building. Uh, this is a preliminary review and we approve the point of village district architectural purity or dis. That's the question for us as an action. Is anyone here representing, uh, maybe for East Avenue LLC?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I am Liz Suchi.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, and good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at Carmody Torrent, Sandec and Hennessy. Our office is ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard. I represent the owner of the property, ninety-four East Ave LLC. Present tonight are Bill Andriopoulos of Andriopoulos Design Associates, project architect, Maria Genovese of Andriopoulos Design Project Manager, Dean Martin, professional engineer of Grumman Engineering, and Kate Throck Morton of Environmental Land Solutions. Also, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Diaco, who are principals in ninety-four East Avenue, should be on the line along with their son Vincent. Should you have any questions? Uh, this is a rather straightforward coastal site plan application, but just by way of background, the property is across the street from the Norwalk Inn and Conference Center. It's adjacent to other lots that are developed with mixed-use office and residential. The rear of the property abuts Smith Street, some thirty feet down gradient. Uh, the parcel is just about, uh, point six-three of an acre. It's within the C D three and the East Avenue Village District Zone and with also within the coastal area management zone, but it is not within a coastal hazard zone area. The existing conditions, as was indicated, there is a twenty-one thousand square foot mixed-use office and residential building. Right now, there are five residential units and about five thousand three hundred square feet of office. The original building was constructed around eighteen twenty-five and there have been several additions over the years, the most recent of which was in twenty twelve. There are thirty-two ungrade parking spaces, twenty-six of which are, um, accessed off to East Avenue, and then there are six accessed off Smith Street. The application before you is to convert fifty-two hundred square feet of existing office into five res- six residential units, one studio, three one-bedrooms and two, two bedrooms. Studio or two bedrooms, there it is. Uh, we would ask, uh, hopefully that the commission could move forward with the appointment of the design review consultant for architectural purposes and also that the commission would determine that the, uh, conversion of office space and the very minor changes, the exterior of the building are not necessary for a public hearing. Uh, so the proposal, as I said, is to renovate the first, second, uh, the first, excuse me, the lower level, the first level and second floor space from office to residential. The total number of units would be eleven if all approvals are secured. The applicable applicant plans to pay the one-time fee rather than designate one unit as affordable and that is part of your regulations as a permitted alternative. As I mentioned, there are thirty-two parking spaces on site. Uh, with the changes to eleven units, we would only be required to have fourteen or fifteen spaces. So there'd be more than sufficient spaces on the site, uh, access on, from East Avenue. These six spaces at the rear of the property that are accessed off Smith Street would be removed and that would be created into a more of an, um, amenity space for residents. Uh, the, the pavement would come out, previous pavers would be installed. Minor changes to the footprint are proposed. Uh, a first floor enclosed patio is proposed to be an open patio and extended just slightly so as to provide emergency access to one of the first floor minutes, um, units. There are no changes otherwise to site coverage, building height, number of stories. Um, it's, as I said, completely compliant in terms of parking for the number of spaces and the like. So if you have any further, if you have any questions of me or of Mr. Andriopoulos or Ms. Genovese, uh, Kate Throck Morton, Dean Martin, we're all here and available, but I think it's rather forward, camp site plan change, office use to residential. And that's about it.
Steve, uh, is, is staff recommending, uh, which firm we'd be using?
Yes, I think, um, Michelle, who, Michelle.
Yes, I think Michelle, who, Michelle Andrews, who's processing the application, has reached out to BFJ already, so there. That was the staff recommendation.
Okay, I I saw Mr. Fish online at the beginning of the meeting. Doesn't seem to be there yet.
Yeah, I think he was just checking it out and getting acquainted with it. Did you need to look at any of the plans at all at this point? Are you comfortable with what's in front of you?
How does the Commission feel? Does anyone feel the media is pointing to see the plans? Or would we have to appoint the architect?
Move forward with the peer review. Yeah, I mean, there's usually an iterative process between between the architect and the developer anyway, which may incorporate some changes from what we've seen. I just assumed.
Right, okay. Well, we will then move forward to appoint the purity architect. Do we do a motion?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, do I hear? Do I have a motion?
Move to the point of review architect. Look at the project.
Okay, is there a second? No, a second? Is there any further discussion?
We'd just like to ask if the staff or somebody could let us know the value difference between an office building and a residential building, if we can just kind of get a sense, because now this is the second time it's happening. We're doing conversions, and I'm curious what the how they're assessed.
Yeah, I believe there's been a couple in that general neighborhood that have been completed, so we should be able to get that data.
Okay, so she will do a roll call on this.
If you'd like.
Everybody is seated.
Sure, Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor? Thumbs up, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgalls?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
May I also inquire as to the Commission's pleasure with respect to a public hearing? I don't, we don't believe it's necessary since it's not a new structure. The the majority of the work is interior. We would hope that you would not require that that take place.
No reason we need a public hearing for this?
I agree. I'll make I'll make that motion.
In a second.
All right. Everybody in favor? Signify, raise your hand. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Okay, so we will not require a public hearing.
Just so we're clear, Mr. Williams and Ms. Langgalls, I don't believe you took a position one.
No, I guess I abstain. I'm not so sure about that, but.
Oh, you abstain?
Okay, I'll abstain.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, given that it's a historic site that was built in, what, eighteen twenty-five, I think, attorney since she had mentioned, maybe the public would like to chime in, so keep your company and abstain as well.
Okay, thank you. Still, the majority voted not to require. So I guess there will be no public hearing required. So we should be all set with that, and we'll move on to the next matter.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. Appreciate your help. We look forward to coming back to you after we meet with BFJ. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. The next matter is twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one S P slash Cam Millen Provinsky. How do you pronounce his name?
Provinsky, I think.
Provinsky. I'm so sorry. Provinsky. Sixty-five Van Zandt Street and twenty-eight Rowan Street. Special permit and coastal site plan review. Application for the construction of a three-point-five-story, twenty-two dwelling unit mixed-use building. Again, we want to appoint a oh, we are our action, one of our actions would be the approval of use of your third-party architectural peer review.
Yes, the purpose of this on your meeting is not to actually discuss the application, it's just to get the peer review process started, which is required since the property is located in the East Norwalk Village TOD Zone.
Okay, good. You know who you're appointing it?
We've asked for DeCarlo and Dahl to provide us a quote for review.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the usage of a third-party architectural peer review?
I'll move.
Just curious why they're doing the peer review before we even see the application and don't we get to a time? Sure, we're just getting the peer review. Okay, but then after they review it, then we'll review it? Yes.
So you you, I mean, you do have the option, if you wanted to look at the plans at any point in time to or have a preview, that's that's your option as well. The peer review probably is going to take roughly usually something like this, maybe six weeks, eight weeks, so that's why we pushed it to get it on to get that started. But if you have questions, you know, we can pull the plans up now, too.
Well, maybe it's worth it to just pull them up so that we see it now, and then if the peer review makes any changes or, you know, comments, then we and the public will have at least seen what it started as and where it's going.
So the the planes are posted on the page, that's that's there.
Right, okay.
But Brian, you want to pull it up quick?
Sure.
Brian, do you have the I don't know, do you have the ability to at least pull up maybe the, I think it helps for this particular property to pull up an aerial picture just because it is this site is actually two properties and it goes between two streets, so it's a little unique that way.
Sure, hold on one second.
Steve, this thing incorporates sixty-five Van Zandt Street, right? Which was, that was the building that there was an application in a year ago roughly, and then they
No, that was that was forty-nine Van Zandt, Tammy.
That was a couple, a couple lots down.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to drive by specifically and check this out.
So this is a through lot, so that this is sixty-five Van Zandt approximately, and then here's twenty-eight Rowan Street, so that's for the entirety of these two properties.
It was the deli Jimmy's or whatever. Right, okay.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing that's tricky, which was the same thing that came up with forty-nine Van Zandt in in this zone specifically is you need to make things function well, you need really a half an acre, and that half an acre is better positioned on a lot with some more width. This is like it's it doesn't have a lot of width on Van Zandt to begin with, and it's very narrow on Rowan, so it it's it definitely lends it to, looks like if they're really packing the project and, you know, it's not, if if you were looking at the property on the corner, which I think is a church, that would be a much easier site to develop, and it would lay out much better than this one, just when this is just a tough site.
Or even the property on the other side.
Right, yes, something either direction would help, for sure.
We we have a motion. We have a second?
For the peer review.
Yeah, right.
Oh, yes.
So we can vote a vote on the peer review?
Yes, do you feel comfortable with that? Yes, we, okay, thank you.
Okay, so if anybody can vote in favor, well, let's do a vote.
Sure.
I think that's easier than
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor? Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Langgalls?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And if you have any questions, comments, concerns about any of the the peer review projects, the like I said, the applications are online, so you can look at those and just email Brian or I, or I'm asking the consultant and to the applicant.
Okay. Okay, so we move on to twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven S P TVG Partners. This is five ninety-five Westport Avenue. It's a special permit for children viewed for plus or minus eighty-five thousand four hundred square feet portion of an existing building for manufacturing of the self-storage. And this is a preliminary review. Is anybody here representing TVG Partners?
Yes. Good evening. Adam Blank, attorney for TVG Partners, and Julie Dignati, Julie Ludwig, pardon me, from my office is also here. She's going to help try to share our screens so that we can all be on the same page. And Chris Kokadas for TVG Partners is here with me. I think we have on the Zoom John Kowalski from Claris Design, the project architect, and Chris Kowalski from Civil One, I believe, is also on. He's the engineer. All right, so they're all, they can just answer questions that come up, but nobody other than me is going to give you any kind of a real presentation tonight. We'll save that for the your sort of final review, or public hearing, I guess. So with that, we've got an aerial up of the site. It's five ninety Westport Avenue. Me, Joe, maybe?
That was me.
So the property, this property is a single parcel of land. It's comprised of two condominium units and two tax slots. Unit one is about six point eight acres, and that's the large apartment complex there, essentially on the Westport line on on Westport Avenue. And then the the second unit, unit two, that's the property that TVG Partners is in the process of acquiring. They're the contract purchaser. That's a six-and-a-half-acre parcel, and it historically was the Pepperidge Farm Building, which everybody, I think, knows. So in total, it's a it's a little over thirteen acres of land. It's zone C D three C. And the, and again, the apartment complex, we're not the owner of that, and that's not part of this application, but it is technically part of the property. So if we could just pull up the current, a couple pictures of the of the site. The, this is a view sort of from Westport Avenue, looking to the front of the Innovation Center, I think they called it for Pepperidge Farm, which was research development, a little bit of production and and office. And if we can go come through the the pictures, this is a little bit, as you enter the driveway off of Westport Avenue, that's that's the existing structure. Coming further along, you get to the sort of the middle and back half. You can see it's quite a lengthy structure. It's actually about a hundred and ten thousand square feet. And I think, is that the last one or is it one more? There you go, and that's that's towards the back half of the of the property, and so all this along the internal drive aisle. So it's about a hundred and ten thousand square foot space. And the proposal is to leave the front twenty-five thousand square feet or so, essentially exactly as is. While TVG is in the process of locating end user, someone to actually occupy that space. It, we're not asking for a change of use from the current use for that front twenty-five thousand square foot portion of the building. It's possible that the end user might be retail. It's possible it might be office, hasn't been lined up yet. But but right now, we're not asking for any change to zoning for the front portion of the building. The back half of the building, we'd like to convert to about eighty-five thousand square feet of self-storage. It, although this is a special permit application, this is essentially just an interior fit-up job. The building will remain, the the shell that you see will, by and large, remain, and we'll have the architect either today or later can give you a presentation on the exterior, but essentially it remains the same with very, very minor changes to accommodate loading and some some sidewalks to to fit the new use up to the existing building. The self-storage use, as you, I think, know, is a far less intense use than the prior research development office use of the site will result in a substantial decrease in traffic, has a far lower parking requirement. And all in all, it's going to be, I think, a pretty seamless transition from the current or the prior use. We are going to have handicap spaces, loading spaces, bicycle spaces. Access will get improved to the building. There's a small patio that's going to be removed and replaced with landscaping. If you've been out on the site or if you haven't, you should take a look. It's it's pretty well-kept currently and very nicely landscaped. It's a it's a nice site. So that's the gist of what we're looking to do, and if you have questions for us today on that, happy to answer it. Otherwise, we'll come back at some point in time for a public hearing.
Okay, does anybody have questions?
I just have one. Oh, go ahead, though, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Nick.
First, Galen, Richard asked me to tell you he had a step away, so he had left, he has left the meeting. My one question, Adam, is just, when you guys were looking at this site for self-storage, did you consider other options instead of self-storage? Was apartments or other things considered there?
Well, so for apartments, again, I I think I started by saying it's a condo, and there's an apartment building next door.
Yeah, there's stuff to the right, but this is the Pepperidge Farm building that's being converted into self-storage, right?
Right, right, but so Mr. Cantor, the the, because it's a condominium, there's a declaration between the two unit owners that prohibits apartment use on this parcel.
Oh, I missed that. I'm sorry.
It it would, if it didn't, if that wasn't there, I strongly suspect you'd be seeing a different application, but but that's there there are certain uses that are allowed by virtue of the condo declaration, even though more uses are allowed by your regulations. I know that they've looked at some other uses for the site, but but this this seems to Yeah. And that the property owner did recently build a ten-willard. There's a self-storage there. If you wanted to see, we could show you some photos there, but they put up a very nice building just just down the street within the last three years.
No, I'm very familiar with the that project and the area, just I just, anyway, self-storage doesn't seem like the, anyway, the best, I mean, I understand that probably for the comp, the situation at hand, it's just self, I'm always skeptical of more self-storage. But that's neither here nor there.
Yeah.
Attorney Black, could you please just explain again, TG TVG Partners owns the whole structure?
So there's two, right, two, two, the two parcels or two condominiums, there's the the apartment building side, they have nothing to do with that. They own, they are the contract purchaser. They haven't closed yet on the the purchase, but they're the contract purchaser for the entirety of what we would view as the Pepperidge Farm property or the Pepperidge Farm building.
And that is five ninety-five B Westport Avenue?
Yes.
A B or two?
Yes.
Okay, not A. A is the condo one. Okay, just want to make sure I'm on the right property. Thank you.
Anything else? Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, Attorney Black.
Thank you. I'm going to stay because I'm next, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next matter is twenty Okay, the next matter is twenty-four dash sixty-five S P R slash camp High Park Properties LLC, seventy-one Water Street and twenty-five Elizabeth Street. Coastal Site Plan View Application for the construction of, I think, story thirty-two-wheelering unit, mixed-use building. Thirty-two unit mixed-use building. And uh we'll have a report and then a recommendation. To Attorney Blank.
Okay, thank, thank you, uh. Um, again, uh Adam Blank for High Park Properties, owner of seventy-one Water and twenty-five Elizabeth. Um, the, I'll give you a uh fairly brief overview, and then you'll hear from the the project engineer, Mark Ackman, who's remote. Uh, and if you can make sure that maybe Brian uh imports Mark uh in, um Sealan uh from Byntfield Architect, he's the project architect, again, he's gonna um present remotely uh this evening. Uh, Eric Raines uh uh here, um uh landscaped uh architect and Steve Sapola, the traffic engineer, uh is remote uh as well. Um, I believe uh Paul Gudas uh on behalf of the property owner is here to answer questions, but isn't gonna give a presentation, um so uh we have sign-offs for from health, fire and building. Um, we received, and they're part of your record, some uh what I would describe as fairly benign comments from T M P and D P W. Um, we provided uh responses to those comments, and I I know it was a condition of approval, I've seen a draft suggest that that they're, that we get their sign-off as part of uh, you know, your approval, which is acceptable with us and um, we'll we'll continue to work on that. Uh, the project was approved by the redevelopment authority, it's in a redevelopment area, it was approved by the redevelopment authority last week. Um, as you know, it was referred out for for peer architectural review to B F J. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about our interactions with B F J in a few minutes, so uh you have up on the screen uh seventy-one Water, and then I think not highlighted, but immediately next to it is twenty-five Elizabeth, those are technically the two parcels that are part of this uh application. Collectively, they're about point three eight acres. Um, located again on the corner of Water and Elizabeth, and you obviously you can see where Washington is, and the the bridge, and then we're just down from Washington on 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 Water and Elizabeth. Um, the, it's located in the C D four zone. Uh, currently, the site has a a surface parking lot and a thirteen thousand square foot office uh slash warehouse uh structure. Um, High Park Properties um would like to develop the site with thirty-two luxury residential uh apartments, uh which would include three workforce units. Ballpark, three thousand square feet of uh retail space would be part of the development. Um, although these uh and and these are all uses permitted by site plan, this is not a special permit. Um, the, the thirty-one uh spaces are all garaged, uh there's two handicap spaces. Um, a number of the parking spaces are actually double-length, they don't count as more than the thirty-one spaces I've told you under your regulations, but as a practical matter, um they can accommodate more than thirty-one vehicles in the parking garage. Um, the uh the the ground level will have the the parking with a resident lobby and retail area, which will be a fitness center that will extend up an additional two stories, so three levels of of a fitness area. Um, the the remainder of the building is residential, uh with a uh a fair amount of rooftop amenities, which you'll uh hear about and see uh shortly, um the finishes are all really, I think, top top shelf, um and the developer intends to feature many products from their related entity um Clar Studio Windows and Doors, which is uh located uh on Main Ave here in in Norwalk. Um, and they sell uh bespoke sophisticated European uh windows and doors uh that are very uh durable. So so there's gonna feature a whole lot of glass in this building, because that's what the the owner does for a living, is glass. Um, the existing site's about ninety percent impervious, so without us doing any work, it's ninety percent of it is is covered with impervious surface. Uh, redevelopment isn't gonna substantially change that number, but it will result in a in much better drainage, uh a a full landscaping plan, um and the drainage includes, I think, ten new galleries, hydrodynamic separator, some permeable walkways. Um, there'll be a decrease in peak storm runoff rate and volume, increase in water uh quality. Um, originally, just so that, I don't want you to say you were misled, originally, the plans did uh call for a green roof over a portion of the roof, um as we work things through both with B F J and internally, um the green roof is no longer a part of the project, um it it worked a lot better, we were able to make things fit on the roof, uh otherwise uh with underground stormwater detention systems, uh so that's, so that was increased and the the green roof uh was uh removed. Again, it fully complies with your drainage requirements. Um, the, you've got a traffic report, you'll hear from the traffic engineer. This is gonna actually generate uh a few fewer trips um than the prior use, um which was a more intense use, um. So we don't anticipate any significant roadway impacts or delays. Um, it is in a coastal area management uh zone. Um, no coastal resources were identified within the boundary of the property. It's not located in uh a coastal flood hazard area. Um, and there are um the we think it's fully consistent with the uh stated goals and policies of that Coastal Area Management Act. Um, uh, lastly, uh with respect to B F J, uh it went, we went to B F J for a peer review. Uh, we worked with them over three or four months, uh and um to to try to get compliance both with your regs and with the redevelopment guidelines, we made a number of modifications to the plan in response to the guidance that we received from B F J. Um, I think there is only remaining, I think, four areas that B F J expressed that I would call of of concern um or of interest. Um, Sealan's gonna give you a little bit more detail on those, but 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 I just tick through them. Um, they wanted the drawings, the civil and the architectural landscape to be coordinated better, so they all matched perfectly, um which we agreed, it made made a lot of sense, and so we didn't have any issue with with that, uh with addressing that uh concern, um they asked that we submit a signage plan, um which typically signage plans, at least the Norwalk practice is typically a signage plan comes after the approval, which we will submit a signage plan, we'll agree to it as a condition, but but we just hasn't been, we're not that far along yet to to know what that would look like, so we we don't have any issue with that comment from B F J. Uh, they asked for some modifications to the building to facilitate pedestrian and handicap access coming off of Elizabeth Street into the 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 first floor of the building. Uh, uh, we've we've made changes uh to address that concern. And I think B F J's gonna speak for themselves, but you know, at the redevelopment hearing, they were very happy with the changes we made and thought that worked well. So I think we've addressed that concern, uh uh finally, they asked that we confirm that the electrical and mechanical rooms comply with uh building codes related to to flood zones, and I may have missed, but it is in a flood zone here. Um, the um, and we confirmed with S N U that they had no issues with everything that we had sort of proposed, uh but because uh but your regs, um I go above and beyond FEMA and building code with respect to um lifting mechanicals. Um, when there's a residential portion of a building, um so uh so so in any event, there's there was an issue with the transformer locations uh on the site. Um, that's gonna require some change to them to uh to be elevated a little bit higher than what was originally proposed, and we've have a solution for that, but we haven't cleared it with S N U uh quite yet, uh and your staff, so again, we expect as a condition of approval that 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 be uh addressed, and I think that already is listed as a condition of uh approval, those are the only concerns that we believe currently were been raised by uh the peer of the architect. Uh, so uh with that moderately brief introduction, um I'd like to turn it over absent any questions from you preliminarily to Mark Ackman, the uh project engineer.
If you have a question? JJ has a question. What bill, what, what business is currently there?
I don't know that anyone's
It used to be.
You know, if there's anybody occupying the space currently, or is it vacant?
You're muted, Sealan.
JJ, that's what it looked like.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hi, Sealan, brother, Byntfield Architecture. Um, Adam, there's no one currently in the building, I think Claire's using it as a a space to support their business.
Sorry, we couldn't hear that.
No office in that space anymore. I I believe there's no office in that, there used to be an office user, but there isn't anymore. Claire, Claire Windows, which is owner's business, in Norwalk is using that space right now. Right now, today. I can, I can find out for you before the end of the meeting, Adam.
Okay. Did you hear that?
No.
The the, so I, what he said is, the the owner, the developer of this property, which owns Claire Windows and Doors is is using this site for his own personal business pursuits, but they've they've eliminated all of the the tenants.
Yeah.
So it's vacant.
Yeah, essentially, I mean, technically not, he's still got it, and he can do some stuff in it, but it's that, it's, no one's getting evicted.
He would be occupying the same footprint.
He's gonna be, he's gonna be, he's gonna demolish the building to build a whole new one.
Right, but on the same footprint, there's gonna be no displacement around.
No, the 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 site, that was, that's in the subject of the application, is unoccupied. There used to be a thrift shop there, it's called the Marketplace about a year and a half or two ago, but it's uh vacant right now, so the application before us is just uh a vacant, uh the site.
Yeah, now technically, the the building, the footprint of the building is not gonna be exactly the same space, but it's gonna be that and some of the parking lot that that was there, but it's not taking down other buildings or displacing other businesses.
Thank you.
Um, Attorney Blank, I have a question about, it looks like in your rendering of the building that the parking enters from the side on Elizabeth Street. And um we, Elizabeth Street is one way going east toward Water Street. And when Water Street floods, as we know that it does, I'm sure your building will be compliant, but if people that live there I don't know how compliant the parking lot is, if they have to get out and they have to turn onto Water Street, they're gonna be going right into the big Water Street River, so I'm just curious how that might get worked out, and maybe we don't have an answer for that tonight, but something.
So I, I mean, I, you're correct, the the entrance is 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 um it it's it's not on Water Street, um and I think we did get, I'm I'm certain that T M P in their memo to us uh did ask us to be aware that T M P may change the direction of Elizabeth Street, uh which would solve that concern, that is like way outside of my and the client's pay grade, so I I'm not promising that's gonna happen, but I know that T M P is at least looking into it.
Very good, just want you to be aware, you don't wanna have unhappy clients living in there that their parking garage is flooding on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah, although I I think Sealan can, when he goes through it, go through the elevations, um but but it is, it is higher there significantly than than at Water Street.
And so the, and the Charkit building next door over on Havlin Street, and their parking, none of that is involved in this project.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Mark?
Yeah, can you hear me? Good evening.
Yep, we can hear you.
Uh, my name is Mark Ackman, uh for the record, I hopefully every everybody can see my screen. Um, my name is Mark Ackman from Ackman Associates, uh with offices in Fairfield, Connecticut. Our office, along with Chevlin Land Surveying LLC, has provided the surveying insight and engineering for the development of the project. Uh, subject project is located on the northwest corner of Water Street and Elizabeth Street. And our parcels are known as seventy-one Water Street and twenty-five Elizabeth Street. As part of the development, uh the property will be merged into one property, uh with a total area of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two square feet. Uh, the property is found in zone uh C D four, it's found in the flood hazard zone, A E elevation twelve, as well as the coastal area management zone. Uh, the existing parcels presently support a two-story building along with a asphalt parking lot to the what directly west of the building. Uh, the site is approximately ninety point eight percent impervious in coverage. Uh, currently runoff from the property flows from the west to the east and uh making its way into the city storms, uh storm drainage system, uh via catch basins along uh the corner of Elizabeth Street, as well as along uh Water Street, there's two catch basins here directly in front of the building. The stormwater runoff from the site eventually discharges into the Norwalk River without any onsite detention or water quality treatment. Um, the the proposed development is to demolish the existing structures, as well as removal of the existing asphalt parking lot. And construct a six-story mixed-use multi-building comprised of thirty-two residential apartments, uh retail space and a two-story parking garage. As mentioned earlier, the parap- property lies within the camp boundary, uh the property is located three hundred and five feet uh west of the Norwalk River. And it's separated from the river by Water Street, as well as some commercial properties uh along the front edge of the Norwalk River. Um, proposed improvements will be elevated to make the development FEMA compliant, as well as city compliant. Uh, and onsite runoff and water quality will be improved through the onsite stormwater infiltration system. As such, we do not anticipate any adverse effects to the coastal resources. Along Water Street, we'll have standard city streetscapes with granite curbs, concrete pavers, concrete sidewalks, tree surrounds and uh lighting. In between the building and street line, uh we'll have a mix of landscape areas, as well as permeable walkways, uh which will allow for a stormwater runoff to infiltrate into the ground. Along Elizabeth Street, um we will have the standard city street get streetscape consisting of granite curbs and concrete sidewalks, uh as well as landscape areas and permeable pavers um between the building and the street line. Uh, as mentioned earlier, um the current site is approximately ninety point eight percent impervious in coverage uh with no site retention or stormwater quality treatment. Under proposed conditions, we are reducing the impervious coverage to approximately eighty-nine point two percent. Along with the landscaping, impermeable walkways, there'll be two underground infiltration systems located within the garage area over here. Uh, stormwater runoff from the roof air area, as well as the uncovered parking garage area will be routed through this, these systems. Uh, the underground infiltration system will store the water quality volume, uh which is the first one point three inches of runoff from the site. Uh, this is considered the first flush, which tends to carry the highest concentration of pollutants within it. Uh, by storing the water quality volume and reducing the impervious area on the site, we will be providing a reduction to peak runoff rate and runoff volume from the site as required in the D P uh W's drainage manual. Uh, at this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions, otherwise I'll pass it along to Attorney Blank.
Uh, will um the runoff continue to uh go uh through Water Street, or will it be pumped up uh towards South Main Street?
Um, we we will be storing approximately one point seven five inches uh from the site, and then it will be metered out uh on into the catch basin on uh on the corner of Elizabeth Street and Water Street, right, right over here.
Thank you.
I just asked a question, um, Mr. Ackman, in my experience traveling on Water Street, I'm more worried about not runoff, but water coming up into the property, um and it comes up the storm drains, and I think the city has been working on flow valves or whatever they're called, and they've been doing pollution control in some of the drains down there, but it's, it's a big wet mess down there, and it's not runoff, it's water coming up, stormwater, on a big rain and a high tide, it floods down there all the time. It's not your problem, but it's just, you know, just be aware, it's coming this way, it's not going that way.
Yeah. Uh, I I understand, uh, we try to uh uh obviously reduce the amount of runoff coming off of our site, um but obviously we can't mitigate um other people's private properties as well as, um, you know, the the high tide and the level uh within the uh storm tour itself.
Are all the chemicals on the roof and how are they screened?
Commissioner Lankowski, I can get into that when I, when I show you the roof plan. Or I can do it now if you prefer.
You want to, can we just turn that ceiling take over unless there's more questions to mark? And he can, he can answer the question.
I believe that.
To to Tammy's uh, question. What happens when uh, the water does back up from Water Street uh, toward this property? Um, and you're holding on to uh, that first one point three inches. Um, it can't get out. So what happens to it? Does it backflow into the into the garage?
I I I have uh, right at this location, I have an an overflow outlet. So if any water does back up, it will get to this elevation over here and then overflow out of this uh, out of this catch uh, area drain that I have here. Which has approximately set elevation seven point eight, um, which is the start of the garage entrance.
All right, for Sealan, that. Sealan, you want to mark your, that Sealan's chair to screen?
Uh huh. Mark, can you?
Yes, just did.
You you see my screen?
Yeah.
All right, good. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sealan Pappal. I'm a principal at Bynfield Architecture. Um, sorry, I'm not here in person, um, but I'm right at the, in our office right here in Newark, just behind the site uh, right now. So started with this image because um, this, well, this is the site right here. And this is Water Street. That's Elizabeth. Um, now, and I want to draw comparison between the, we designed this building a while ago, Sona Harborside. Uh, it's a similar approach to building a building on Water Street. Yeah, flood issues are significant. Um, and the water issues are, and the, and your zoning code has changed to elevate the above the baseline elevation two foot now as opposed to one when this was built. Um, but there's, there's uh, there were lessons learned on how to approach building along Water Street, which we learned here. And we built the ironworks, we worked in the ironworks a while ago, uh, down the street here. So we're vested in what the street is, what the streetscape is, and uh, and what the experience is along the street, but also the technical issues to deal with the building along Water Street. And with that, this is what we're proposing. So before we get into technical, technical, but the just the architectural idea behind this is that first, there's a, this, we always look for uh, what the language of the area is, and we've been familiar with that, working in the walk for so long. And there's a, there's a factory aesthetic that is common in Water Street. Even the old Norwalk Company, if you remember that, that we tried to repeat when we did that building. And this is a, it's a modern building, but it's an abstract, abstracted version of that uh, vernacular, which is a relentless facade. But then, once you have that, you layer it and make it more interesting. And the way we did it on this project, hopefully, if you agree, is that uh, the concept is that there's a porcelain exoskeleton here in gray, which is more regular in its architectural approach. And on the inside, there's a wood core that rises through it, and that's more irregular. So we thought that those, just the architectural approach of having something that's softer and irregular on the inside, rise within a more uh, regular exterior facade and exoskeleton, if you will, was interesting. And then we took those two materials, the wood and the and the porcelain, and we use that to create interesting elements around the facade. So for example, these are actually balconies, but instead treating them just like regular balconies, uh, we use the the wood as screens to create some interest in the, on the edges of the balcony as the balcony is returned to the uh, return to the face of the building, which is actually back here.
How tall is the glass?
How tall is this glass? This glass is about nine foot tall.
Balconies.
Well, the balcony, balcony glass.
This is, this is ten, this is ten foot setback. Is that the question from here to here?
So the, the rail, the uh, glass on the, the balcony right there.
The guardrail? This this here? Oh, yeah, that that's, that'd be a code, that's, that'll be a code minimum of forty-four inches.
Can you repeat that, please?
Forty-four inches. Yeah, code minimum of forty-four inches. Yeah. Um, and we usually, although the code says forty-four, I'm sorry, I'm I'm gonna speak a bit louder. If I'm too loud, just let me know. Uh, but the code says forty-four, uh, when we do the roof terrace rails, we normally put that at forty-eight, just because it's so high. Um, people, people feel more comfortable with a four-foot rail on a roof, uh, when they're up that high. And then, again, back to the uh, the architectural elements. We use the same, you can't see it, but the sun is hitting it, but this is also a wood, a wood and steel element here meant to use the same materials and accent. Uh, accent the elevation. So you basically take a, what is essentially a simple approach to the facade, and you layer it with some interest, and that brings a point to life, hopefully. We also, as Adam said, are using a lot of glass, uh, because the owner wants to, only has a glass company, a window company that's here based in Newark as well. We've used his windows on other projects that he has not owned. Uh, it's a high-quality product. So he intends to use the best of his products on this building. And just for example, what this shows is even though there's no balcony on the outside on these facades, uh, these are glass guards built into the window system. So you slide the doors and you essentially have a Juliet balcony. Your, your, your whole apartment is open to the outside. It's a bolting glass rail into the windows. Uh, so those are typically very expensive, but the reason that we can afford it is because Paul, Paul Goeris brings it to the project. And then, one of the more important design considerations, and I can clearly see you guys are sensitive to it also, is is the height of the building and the height above flood on, especially on Water Street. And then in turn, what that does to the architecture, and then, and B F J uh, brought it up Frank Fishes on the call. That was something specific, they specifically interested in. One is, the elevation is flood plus two, so that's fourteen. And that, because this is about eight in this corner and goes on to seven. It's it's anywhere between seven foot six and six foot of the, this, this walking surface above the sidewalk. And it's necessary, right? Because that's where, that's your flood elevation, so we had to do it. But then we lay it down to the, to the sidewalk like we did at uh, Sona Harborside, so so that wall is less imposing. But there are times when you actually walk up into uh, the building to get up to the retail like here. So it was important for us to, important for uh, us and 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 B F J's comments to treat that in a sensitive way. So it just didn't look like a blank wall. But this is actually creating a public space um, in front of the wall, and then you walk up to the elevation fourteen, and you enter the retail, and you enter the building in those two locations. So although the building is up high, we think we've uh, we've created enough breaks in that, in that lower terrace to make it feel like it's part of the pedestrian experience. Uh, and I'll, I'll get to materials in a second, but just want to note that the, the, the client was, the owner was interested in using high-quality materials so that his building stood out from the rest of the product in in Newark. So that's what you see here. These are porcelain panels, and this is uh, an artificial wood padding. All right, so I'll go through the plans. I'll start here, just walk you around the building. So Water Street, Elizabeth Street, here's the corner, here's that raised terrace at fourteen, here's the terrace around here, uh, looping around at a lower level. Uh, and to your point, Commissioner Lankowski, uh, it's, you start at seven foot eight as you enter. You ramp up to eight foot six here in this zone. Um, these spaces are between eight foot six and nine, but you quickly get to nine. So there's a positive drainage out this, this way out through the site. So you go quickly to nine, which is pretty high, and then quickly to twelve here. So all of the slopes to the outside. Um, and then you ramp up around the building, uh, on the edges and get to a mezzanine level of parking, which is well above flood. Now you're up on the second level. So hopefully that helps with the mitigation of how many cars at any given flood um, event are exposed to the flood um, by getting up to the nine. That's a number we try to hit to get by, by getting up to nine pretty quickly. And this is what you see at Sono Harborside, uh, opposite Sono Bakery. Uh, there's a, there's a driveway it has to, because the road is a certain level, flood is a different level. It ramps up and there's parking along it, but you try and keep as many of the parking spaces outside of that, that, that flood elevation. So the way, now this is, to prepare, this is a, a, a plan. I'm gonna show you what the B F, final B F J comments were, uh, but this is what you have in records. I'll go through it for now. Uh, there's mechanical rooms and screening the parking. They're all very, um, they're curated exterior, so they don't look like mechanical rooms. You saw that in our vision, yeah, and here. But they, they um, essentially uh, block off the parking. Then you would walk up to this terrace either from Water Street or Elizabeth Street to get to a lobby, two-story lobby. And there's a retail space. Now, the retail space may sound, feel quirky in your drawing, because it goes up three levels. And that's because uh, the owner has a very specific retail tenant in mind. He, he wants a high-end uh, health tub in there. And he's already been speaking to them, and and he knows they can exist over three floors with different, different parts of their business on each floor. And he also sees this as an amenity to the, to the building, so the building users will have access to the gym from their residential floors, which is a nice perk. Um, so stay well here, stay well here. Here's the edges that we discussed. Here's our public space here, and here's our ego room back here. Now you go to the mezzanine level, a mezzanine lobby space, and a mezzanine retail space. Up here, you have a generator and the rest of your parking spaces. This is a common approach into the, to the buildings that we've, we've produced in Newark with the mezzanine parking uh, taking up the twenty-five foot, which is your zoning minimum for a floor, for the first floor in a building uh, in the new zoning regs. So we, instead of making the parking, instead of parking having a, a ceiling of twenty-five, we split it into a mezzanine, so you have two parking levels facing one, the first level of, of, of retail slash lobby space. Now you get to level two, and these are single-loaded corridors, so we've made them slightly deeper units than we usually do. Um, so all of the units face out. Hopefully, all of them get a glimpse of the water. I mean, it obviously depends on what development happens across the street eventually, but at the moment, they all get a glimpse of the water. Here's that retail that's coming up to the upper level, and the initial thinking there is that you have fobbed access via this elevator to use that retail. You can only go into the, to the gym, and and tenants have fobbed access to this door to get to that same gym. It has a small amenity space here. Um, as with most of the projects in Newark, the amenity is the town, right? So the mainly doesn't need to be, the mainly space, the interior mainly space doesn't need to be that big, because you can just go downstairs, downstairs, and there's squash courts, there's Washington Street, the town is the amenity. Um, then this rises up, and you have regular units. Uh, the new regs also set back at the upper floor, and that's what this is. Um, so full terrace for what essentially are penthouse units. And then what Adam was alluding to appears a, a really highly amenitized roof deck. And this was very important to the owner, and that's why it's bigger than anything, bigger and uh, more elaborate than anything we've done. This is gonna be a uh, steel frame building. It won't be wood frame. So the concept is to have a pool up on the upper level. There is, there is a pool, a smaller one on Sona Harborside, I believe. The idea here is to have a bigger pool, a raised deck, so all of that looks over the water. And to a step where we even use fireglass, which is very expensive, in the stairwell to look through the stairwell to the water from that roof deck. Remember, these are just spaces uh, for the residents above. She's a point of screening, I think Sealan is wrong. Here, condenses um, for the units below. There's a screen wall around them, partially parapet and partially screen wall here. And these condenses on this side of the building, again, with a screen wall around them, partially parapet and partially screen wall on them here. Go to these elevations. Here, your two D elevations. This is facing Water Street. This is fa- facing Elizabeth Street. Here, the materials, um, glass railing, limestone, because you don't allow parched concrete that we use in other projects at the lower level anymore in the new regs. So that's all kind of limestone at the bottom or limestone finish. Um, this is porcelain panels on the primary frame. And then, like I said, that core that rises up in the middle of the building is a wood siding. We say wood siding, but it's gonna be one of those uh, uh, products that simulates wood, because on a commercial building, you don't want to use actual wood, but it, it looks almost exactly like wood. Um, this is, that's what you showed you on, on Elizabeth Street. Okay, okay. Uh, and this is now the back of the building. You can, you can see it if you want, other properties, may maybe on the Elizabeth Street parking deck. But that, here, this is, this is, this is the side facing, uh, this is Water Street here. So this is the thin edge of the building facing towards Washington Street. And this is what you see if you were driving down Elizabeth Street. So even though we're at the back of the building, a lot, a lot of glass, a lot of glazing, um, try to accentuate the architecture. These are all our calculations, right? Um, I think we've already spoken about those. And just to give you an idea of the section. And this is the best one.
Where, where are the affordable uh, units and what size are they?
Got an affordable plan here. So we chose to do, we need three affordable units. We chose to do uh, three one-bedrooms. And and Adam said, if you guys didn't feel that was appropriate, you would tell us. Um, on the second floor, one here, on the third floor, facing Water Street, one here. This is nine hundred and forty-nine. Sorry, I should have told you sizes. This is eight hundred and seventy-one. This is nine hundred and forty-nine. And then there's one on the fourth floor, another one bedroom at nine hundred and seventy-three. Commissioner Shulman, was that enough information or true?
I think that was sufficient. I think that was sufficient. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Um, and this is, this is a section to illustrate, in, illustrate the um, geometry of the building. Um, it's a, it's a single-loaded corridor. I mean, you're used to seeing double-loaded right where there's another unit on this side. It's not the case in this building. Everything faces out towards the water. Um, and here's your two, two-story retail. Here's that mezzanine parking, taking advantage of the height of that. Uh, when I say retail, I mean, I mean, first floor is the retail and lobby, right? Here's the W- Water Street level, which is lower. This is your, at fourteen, your two, base plus two. And then here's your five stories of residential above, with the upper story setback, and that's your roof deck. But uh, that's what I have. Any questions?
Anybody have questions?
This is really a question for Steve. Is this Norwalk's first fully glazed residential building?
Can you repeat the question?
Is this Norwalk's first fully glazed residential? Is this Norwalk's first fully glazed residential building?
I think it's probably got the most that I can recall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think so.
H M T, yeah.
Yeah, that, that wasn't residential though. I was thinking Saint Dorse Seven, before they pulled it, that had a lot.
Like two hundred Connecticut, but this residential.
This has a lot more, or just residential.
So Steve, I would offer that, this probably has the most glazing, yeah, that we've seen. But the center mass of Sono Central, and I can bring that up if you want, has a lot of glazing also. The new building, close to, directly opposite of the police station. And that central courtyard has about the same, if you want a picture, I wouldn't call it fully glazed. If you wanna, in your mind, have a picture of how much glazing this is, that center mass of Sono Central is about the same.
If you'll remember, we had.
Showed you if you'd like.
We had that regulation for the facade glazing percent, and there's actually a, a limit on how much glazing a, a structure could have, which this would exceed, so it was a good thing that we, we revised that regulation.
And, and I think we do have in our documents a glazing calc for you guys.
I think you probably covered this, but I'm, I'm having a little trouble hearing. What is the elevation of the first floor of parking? And is there assigned parking in the building or open parking?
I believe it has to be open parking because it's got retail also.
Steve, if I jump in on the, on the, yeah, on the, on the parking. It would be o- open parking, because we're gonna share it with the retail during the day. But the owner is looking at what, what they're gonna do in the evening hours, if there'll be any assigned spaces in the evening. Or if it will be open parking in the evening as well. But, and I think the elevation, Stephen, you want to deal with the elevation?
Yeah, I can't, I can't see, it's too small.
And are you guys exploring a gated entry and exit? That would be an, an operation during the night?
Mr. Williams, that's a good question. I mean, we haven't yet. That's a, that's a question, maybe the, the owner will opine on later. But not, not as of yet, and, and we didn't gate Sono Harborside either.
Uh, can you repeat the last sentence, please?
Well, I, I'm, I'm really sorry, can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
We heard you, they, they, he said that they, they didn't gate Sono Harborside either. And then on this, when you come in, it's about seven and a half feet. And it quickly ramps up to nine feet on the ground level of parking.
Thank you.
I think. The hours question. Go ahead, Stephen.
I was just saying, it, we made the intentional effort to have most of the park in the first floor between nine and twelve.
And I think the hours might get dictated by the hours of the gym. So if the, if the gym is open till ten o'clock, it's gonna be harder to regulate the tenant part. Because, you know, the tenants are more than likely, most of them will be back before ten unless they're out. So they'll have to, they have to figure that out.
All right. It's okay, so if you can have Eric here with the landscaping.
Do, do you guys have that, or do you want Brian to bring that, pull it up?
Um, he can, you got it. Good evening, Eric Raines, a landscape architect for the, for the project. So Sealan walked around the building perimeter in, in good detail. So probably the best way for me to approach my presentation is to talk about how, how it's sort of finished. And a lot of that has to do with the, the plant material, the plant palette that we selected. And, and then one area in particular, which we're excited about, is sort of midway between the building to provide some seating opportunity for the public as they use the sidewalk along Water Street. So starting off on Elizabeth, that, that southwestern corner. The base of the building around all the Elizabeth Street side and on the, on the Water Street side, there's vegetation continuously around, around the building. Except where there's access for, for stair, or to access stairs or building entries. And so on the end there particularly, it's an evergreen ground cover that's in front of those mechanical rooms that Sealan was mentioning. And, and as you go across the driveway, we mentioned permeable pavers, so the driveway before you go into the garage would have permeable pavers in that. And then moving farther toward the east, along that stepped wall that Sealan had in the rendering, is where we introduced some flowering shrubs, so that we would get a long seasonal interest out, out of the, out of the plantings. The objective for all the plantings and within the palette is that, is that there would always be something going on throughout the year, as opposed to everything happening in the spring related to color, or everything happening in the fall, again, related, related to color. So for that one, it's a repeat blooming rose that, that would be along that edge. It gives us pretty much a full summer of, of color. And the wrapping around onto Water Street, those three, those three circles right in the corner there is an evergreen magnolia tree. Three of them that would have, again, an unusual kind of flower that you don't see on many, many tree types in this, in this zone. And then a ground, evergreen ground plane under that. The circles that parallel the, the, the elevated walkway that Sealan mentioned is an evergreen shrub. So again, trying to, trying to use that layering up to the elevation fourteen that Sealan mentioned. So that the, so that the wall height is, is minimized. And then more toward the center of the building, along the stairs that lead down from the, the, the elevation fourteen, we have a, we have a series of planters that step down as the stairs step down. And then those are planted with a variety of perennial kinds of, kinds of plantings.
So are, are these plantings saltwater tolerant?
They're, they're, we don't anticipate saltwater in the, in the planters themselves, because they're, they're, but they would tolerate like salt spray, like brackish, you know, spray. But those, those three planters that, that step down along, alongside the steps, as I mentioned, or have a mixture of perennials, again, for that seasonal interest. In the mid part of the building, just scroll down just a little bit. We're on the, on the last page, Julie, is a, is an image. So in the middle of the building, we would like to introduce this seating element, it's about seventeen feet long. And it's shown there with two curved ends and then a, a straight section in the middle. The, the aesthetic of that, we're intending for it to be more of a wood slat kind of design, so that it can make those curves comfortably. And then in the center portion of, of our proposal, which is the, the flat part of the bench, it would have a higher than normal back. Trying to give it a little sculptural kind of element to it, so that it, 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 it works with the mass of it. And, and it's, it's more than, than just a bench. And the two curves that, there's, and the two curves on either end of the bench, we're proposing a similar round table to the one that's in this image. So if somebody wanted to sit there and have, have lunch or something like that, they, they could. And then moving farther north, get back to one point now. Moving farther north along Water Street, we have three, we have three bike racks, again, on a permeable paver surface, and then above that, we have trash and recycle bins. So are there any questions?
No.
Excellent, thank you.
For, for traffic, Steve Sapola.
Good evening, for the record, Steve Sapola, Senior Traffic Engineer with Hardisty in Hanover. We conducted the traffic evaluation for the proposed development. Let me just, I can share my screen. As part of our traffic study, we looked at site traffic estimates, both for the existing office space that is now currently vacant, but will be removed as part of the project. And it's gonna be replaced with the thirty-two residential units, as well as the health and fitness club. We calculated site traffic estimates using the latest shift generation handbook, published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. For both the, the office, the multifamily residential, as well as the health and fitness. In addition, we applied the appropriate credits that are allowed by Connecticut DOT. The first one is the internal capture between the, the residential and the health and fitness that accounts for residents who will be, who will be using the, the health and fitness club. And then the second adjustment was for the transit and ride sharing. The site is located within a half a mile of the South Norwalk train station, as well as the bus line that runs along Water Street. So after applying those credits, the new proposed development, when compared to the, the previous office, will generate a net decrease of four vehicles during the morning, an increase of three vehicles in the afternoon, and an increase in ten vehicles on Saturday. We anticipate that the surrounding roadways and intersections should operate similarly to existing conditions. And we don't anticipate any significant impacts during all three peak hours, based on the, the estimated additional vehicles during the afternoon, as well as Saturday. If there's any questions?
So I think that sort of ends our presentation. Any questions, had anything, we're happy to answer it. Otherwise, we hope you'll all look favorably on this application tonight.
I just, not, 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 not for you turning blind, but wanted to see if Mr. Fish had any comments.
Yes, thank you, again Frank Fish from B F J Planning. Just a background, we submitted, as was mentioned earlier, we've been working on this for three or four months. We had an initial memo that was submitted in January, January twenty-third. And it focused quite a bit on the front of this building on Water Street, how the pedestrian experience was and how that worked in terms of access up. And also what we thought at the time was, you know, fairly a blank, if you will, street wall. I think the applicant responded to those. Landscape, Eric went over those changes that were made. And so we got a new set of drawings from them, and we've given the commission a memo now that was down to four comments from us. One is easy, they've agreed to it as I would expect, and that was the coordination of the drawings. And they've, they've agreed on that. The second one was signage. They've, they've said that they will submit, submit signage, as you heard tonight. The third was building access to make sure that the walkway that goes down to Elizabeth Street from within the building would allow handicapped access from the lower lobby to the sidewalk, and I believe they've made that change. And then we suggested that, as part of that, if they do that, provides access directly into the building without having to go through the garage space. But we did say to, that the entrance in the garage might be moved back so that it could be access the area actually adjacent to the mechanical space and electrical space. And that's where bicycles and other things can be stored. Our final comment is one that is up to the building department, but it's, and I think you were all focusing somewhat on flood elevations, as we were. We think the mechanical and electrical space, which is on the ground floor of the building on Elizabeth Street, does need to be looked at carefully in terms of the flood elevation and approved by the building department. Now, I think that they've gone through that with the respective authorities in, in Norwalk. So those were our four basic comments, they've responded to them. As a result, we, we think that this, as we've said before, it's a very high-quality building and a very high-quality design. So we're, 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 this is one of the better designs we think that we've seen. And we, we would recommend that, that you give it approval, subject to those four conditions that I just went over. I think two of which are pretty clear, coordination of drawings and signage. But I think the building access from the lobby down to Elizabeth Street needs to just be clarified as a condition. And that electrical, mechanical telecom room, that's a safety issue, I think, for the building. So we would defer to the building department on that, on the sign-off for that. So those are the four, but basically we are recommending approval of this with those conditions.
Thank you.
Is there a crosswalk on Water Street near the building? Because traffic goes very quickly down Water Street, it's hard to cross the street.
There's a crosswalk across Elizabeth Street.
Is there one right at the end there?
Yeah.
Is that where the traffic?
Does it cross water?
Just across Elizabeth Street.
Just Elizabeth, it doesn't cross water?
No.
And waters?
You have to, to cross Water Street, you have to go down to the life by Sono Bakery.
Yeah.
For a cross.
Okay.
Which no one does.
No. Not even front of West Murray.
Yeah.
Just a quick question for the staff, is the staff comfortable with the location and size of the affordable units?
Yeah, I sent a note to Brian that we just want to check that, I think, because the, the regulation requires that they be evenly distributed and, and then representative of the development as a whole. So I think that would be something to, maybe, I don't know if it's worth pulling that back up. Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, and admittedly, I think your, your staff got the affordable unit location probably five minutes into our presentation this evening. So they haven't had an enormous amount of time to study that. But one of the things that, that we, as we, we're trying to get the client to confirm what, what, what they were looking to do, that is a little bit hard under your new regs, it's probably harder for us and not so hard for you to just say to do it. But is your regs, which I, I like, is that you've changed to allow, if you do a two-bedroom accounts as one and a half units, if you do a three-bedroom accounts as two units. But then you also have a requirement that they kind of be evenly dispersed in, in even quantities. It's not exactly what it says, but, but close to that. And so on this property, there's three units that are required. So three one-bedrooms obviously gets you there. Two two-bedrooms gets you there. Or, but if you did it to one bedrooms and a two-bedroom, or the other way, you actually end up with, under your regs, like three and a half units or four units. And so we did three-one, because that equaled three. You could do two-twos, which equals three. But the only way you get a mix is to come up with something that's actually more than three under your regs. So we, we did it as one bedrooms, but I, I'm, we're happy to like, let staff take a, a look at it further. And if they want to come back to us and propose a, a change, well, we're happy to work with them on that.
Yeah, I mean, there are two, there's another thing to look at, and that is location of the units, whether they're in desirable locations or less desirable. Since they're supposed to be mixed.
Yeah, we, we could, if you want to add that as a condition of approval, like if it gets verified and proven prior to zoning permit, that's fine.
Does anybody have any other questions? I do. Regarding the traffic study and trips in and out, how can you do that when there's nobody in the current building? It was talking about current use and future use, but the building isn't occupied.
So, so sometimes you'll, you'll see them sometimes done in, in two ways. Technically, the building is approved for office use, and any office tenant can go in there without having to come back to you and prove that there's not gonna be a traffic issue. So that is your existing conditions, even though there happens to not be a tenant in there currently. So we do it that way, it's a few units, it's a few vehicle trips less. Sometimes, if they've been vacant for, forever, sometimes they will do it as if it was, nothing was there, which isn't. But either way, it's, I think, acceptable under the traffic standards, and certainly under like the Connecticut case law and the law on it. And your T M T, your T M P department, they, they are not shy about letting us know what they want in a study. And they, they were comfortable with this. Um, and they, they were comfortable with this, and I'm, I'm confident they would have had it. You would be in that memo with an objection if they didn't like the, the way we did the traffic counts.
I, it, it did seem low, very low.
Well, it, it's, it's, it's low in the sense of there's nobody there now, you put in thirty-two units, and, and maybe now you're gonna have during the peak hour, ten, I don't know what's, what's the exact number in Steve's report, maybe it's ten, ten trips out in the morning or twelve trips out, and just in that one hour period. But, but if you compared it to when there was an actual, uh, office use of the property. It's, it's, I mean, it's a reverse then, on the way, you would have had office traffic leaving, and now you're gonna have residential traffic coming. It's, and, and, and look, in the grand scheme of Norwalk, this is a fairly modest sized development of thirty-two units. This isn't a two-hundred unit, you know, uh, building. It's, it, it's gonna have some cars, but.
To get this moving, I move the pool.
A second.
Yes. Take a second. Uh, do we want to look at the proposal?
So the, um, I'll give you all a chance to kind of read through this, um, again. And then I'll kind of highlight where we were heading, or where the discussion was about the affordable housing plan, if we need any changes there.
Yeah, I think we ought to, ought to say, um, um, pending, uh, approval of, uh, the affordable housing, uh, by, by staff.
So you included, uh, this language. If you'd like any revisions, let me know, we could.
It does say right now, but it'll still be in a final workforce housing, some of its staff are cool, so.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That should work.
Then this was, I believe the applicant addressed most of, um, BFJ's request, but I just kind of reiterated it, just, just to make sure.
So is, is, is there gonna be any wording about the proposed two-way street? Want to do anything?
No, because that's a, I don't think they're even at the point where they have any idea what's gonna happen yet. They have, I, I don't think they've done any studies to even make a call one way or the other at this point. Because it could end up, they may say, yeah, we're leaving it the way it is.
Yeah, and that would be on the city side.
And, and each department also gets like another bite at the apple of reviewing the application prior to any construction permits being granted. Um, so if TMP's plans, um, for whatever reason happened to, to change before, uh, building permits issued, that, you know, they'll have to include it as part of it.
They do have to, uh, you know, abide by all conditions required by TMP. So, you know, that's something, so. I think that should be good. Okay, does anybody else have suggestions or changes? No. Are you ready to take a vote? Oops.
Yeah, sorry.
Now mine have vanished. That's okay. Are we ready to take a vote? Yes. Can we do a roll call, Steve?
Sure, Brian, you want to do that one?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
I'm going to stay.
Ms. Lingalis?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
That is approved.
Okay, so it is approved. All right, good.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to the acceptance of minutes for the regular meeting of the equal second, twenty twenty-five. I make a motion to accept. Okay, that's.
Now second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it, it is approved. Comments of the directors, CEO comments?
Very quick, um, your next meeting is not till three weeks, so you have an extra week in between. That will be a long one.
More.
Yes.
Boo.
Two potentially contentious hearings.
Boo. Sorry.
I do have to meet, uh, Galen and, um, and potentially Mr. Cantor out at the Gray Barn side to kind of walk them through what I walked you guys through, which was fairly painless, I think, about twenty-five minutes or twenty-eight minutes, so.
Okay.
Next, next, thank you.
Hopefully, it's a warmer day that you all.
Steve, could you give an answer on Lewis's question about the, uh,
The tanks.
The tanks in the back of the.
No, I talked to their attorney today about the project, and I said, um, that was one of the questions, ADA access was, uh, was the other one? Yeah, and so, yeah, they, they'll be able to respond to that at the, at the hearing.
Thank you. Take a night off. Okay, oh, oh, kind of the commissioners?
Steve, are we getting, uh, city email addresses?
I had not heard anything new on that. I can follow up, um, with IT.
Awesome, thank you.
Are we getting what? I'm sorry, it's an email, city email address. I see, I see. Yes.
Any more comments?
Yes, um, I emailed Steve and Ryan regarding, um, the Anrisa community event on May eighth in, given the, um, review that we had by council, city council, um, because I was curious how they felt we should attend or not. And so, uh, Matt Sapienza, Matthew Sapienza responded, and to summarize, at first he was like, well, maybe you shouldn't go to something like that, but then he said, the application isn't uh, coming anytime soon, so yes, you could, and I said, so maybe I shouldn't make any comments. He said, yeah, that's probably the best thing to do, so. Short and sweet, I think we can attend things like that, but we shouldn't really opine.
Yeah. I, I went to the last man resume meeting, uh, Brian McMahon and I walked through the gym before everyone walked in, and then I went into the auditorium and watched a bit of the presentation, so, but I didn't engage.
Just so everybody knows. Okay, any other comments, commissioners? If we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I know.
Is there a second?
Many.
All those in favor?
Fine.
Okay. Okay, the meeting is adjourned.